Hi there, everybody. This is Bill Houston and you're watching the Bill Houston Podcast. Thanks for tuning in. Please donate if you can to the link below, tinyurl.com. Donate to Bill Houston. If you don't do PayPal, my USPS address is P O Box 22, Endicott, New York, 13761. Or you can just Google Bill Houston's fracking resume. And all of those details, my PayPal and my snail mail address are all right there. So, and I really need your support in order to continue doing this work. And I'm under a lot of pressure, which I'm not going to get into right now, but I have a lot of pressures on my life right now, friends. So really could use your support if you appreciate the work that I've done. Yeah, if you just Google Bill Houston's fracking resume, you can see that. You can see what I've done in the past 10 years. And I have a pretty long history of doing good public service work. What I want to talk to you today is about this NISEG rate increase. And we just, I'm looking at the banner here. It's a rate case. NISEG wants to raise the rates on residential electric and gas in the state of New York. And in addition to NISEG, it's also going to apply to Rochester Electric and Gas, which is all owned by this company called Avangrid. And Avangrid is a foreign corporation wholly owned by Iberdola from Spain. I think I'm saying that right. Iberdola, Iberdola. So this is a foreign corporation. It's a for-profit corporation. And they're not doing public service work. They're not owned by the people of New York. It's not a public corporation. And I believe it issues publicly traded stock. And it operates for profit. So this company, this foreign corporation, anybody can buy shares in it. It's a vehicle by which rich people profit from the benefit of basic services. Like you would think that electric and gas are utilities. We call them public utilities sometimes. So these things should be provisioned. You know, if it is an essential utility, an essential public service, then it seems like it might be immoral to earn a profit off of the provision. And that's why, you know, the Public Sewer Plant is usually a publicly owned corporation. Although in the city of Binghamton, there's an effort to try to privatize that right now. Privatization raises costs because profit becomes a new cost that you have to pay for. It's like paying for somebody to wash the windows. Profit is, it's something you gotta pay back to the investors. So it increase, no privatization can in no way decrease costs. It can only increase costs. It's a private corporation and they want to raise rates. And they're profiting their vehicle by which, you know, rich people, stockholders, can profit from the provisioning of basic human services. And in the wintertime, sometimes somebody can't pay and their heat is shut off. And that's really a big deal. Because you can kill somebody if they don't have heat in the wintertime. Somebody can die. So a for-profit corporation is making decisions, basically life and death, death decisions in New York State. And that's what this is all about. They want more. They want more money. And allegedly, this is about infrastructure. But the question is, what kind of infrastructure are they wanting to do? Is it toward clean and renewable energy? Or is it infrastructure toward dino fuel? You know, this aging fossil fuel. Is it going to lock us into another, you know, potentially decades worth of dependency on this, on this fuel that we shouldn't be, we need to be transitioning away from? For many reasons. I mean, climate change, you know, I believe in climate change. It's very real. And it's very, very important because it's a huge, you know, it could mean wiping out 98% of all life on planet Earth. You know, if we, if we reach the point of no return. Because that's what mass extinctions do. And this is in the geologic record, you know, it's the, look up the Permian Triassic extinction event. Same thing happened, you know, CO2 levels spiked and everything was wiped out. All life except for a very small, you know, we all basically evolved from, you know, some kind of little rat-like creature, you know? I think it was the only kind of mammal that was left. Anyway, so we have to get off these, these dino fuels. So it turns out, let's, let's just go ahead and read from the banner here. And on August 14th and 15th, that's tomorrow, that's Wednesday and Thursday of this week. August 14th and 15th, the New York State Public Service Commission and NISEG will hold informational sessions and opportunities for public comment on NISEG's proposal to raise utility rates, as well as their spending plans for our energy infrastructure. This is our chance to push the Public Service Commission to force NISEG to transition to a clean, renewable and affordable energy infrastructure and to abate further climate change and comply with New York State law. Utility rate cases such as this only occur every three years. This is a big deal, friends. And this is an opportunity for you and me, just ordinary people, to really impact this public policy in this critical, critical time right now. And so we must act now to show public support for a green and affordable energy future. NISEG proposed to raise utility rates on the delivery portion of our monthly electricity and gas bills. Moreover, NISEG continues to expand gas infrastructure and incentivize fossil fuel-based techniques, moving us away from, not towards meeting New York State's goal of net zero emissions by 2050. Green energy and clean technologies are available and are effective. So we should insist on this transition now. So it says, speak out. I'm not sure who wrote this. This has been passed around a lot of places. It's saying, we need to speak out and hold NISEG and the Public Service Commission accountable for their part in creating a clean, sustainable and affordable fossil-free future. I completely agree with that. This statement for potential talking points prepared by, oh, here it is. Rochester's Rochester People's Climate Coalition. And there, I'm going to put the link to this in the show notes. Let's just read, go through some of these talking points. Actually, before I do the talking points, I'm going to come over here. And let's read from Jeff Platsky's article from the Press and Sun Bulletin. And what's the title? Want to comment about gas and electric rate increases? Here's your chance. This was published July 26th by Jeff Platsky. New York utility regulators are soliciting public comment on gas and electric rate increases proposed by New York State Electric and Gas Corporation and Rochester Gas and Electric. A series of public comment sessions are scheduled in August across the territory served by these two utilities, both owned by Avangrid, which is a unit of Spain-based Iberdola. NISEG is asking for a basically 24% increase in electric delivery rates, translating to a $10 month increase in the bill. I guess this is for the fixed, the fixed cost, electric delivery rates. So this is fixed costs. In other words, there's two components of your bill. There's a fixed cost component and there's also, you know, how much you actually use in terms of decotherms or kiloatt hours. And it, which will bring the average cost of delivery to $53 each billing period. Okay, it expired, the current plan expired in April. Utilities will hold rates stable until May of 2020. Since the May filing, New York regulators have taken in nearly 70 comments on the proposal. Many asking the PSC to deny the request and others telling regulators to hold the utilities to a higher standard on climate change initiatives. Oh, and I was going to say before, besides climate change, that's a serious thing too. But the other one is peak oil. And that's, this is very real too. So we have this multi-vectored threat to, you know, existential threat to, you know, humanity's survival on planet Earth and maybe most of all other living things too. So it seems to require urgent action. But one of the vectors is peak oil. Because it turns out, watch the, you know, we'll play, I've played this before. We're going to play it again, the Richard Manning video, where he talks about the fact that there is 10 calories of fossil fuel in each one calorie of our food. So peak oil is, you know, when we hit the downside of that parabola, it's going to cause great shocks to the human food supply. So there's a lot of reasons why, all I'm saying is, you know, this is the, in sum, there's a lot of reasons why we need to be transitioning off these dirty fossil fuels. Because they're polluting and contaminating in the production areas like Northeast PA. I've done a lot of work exposing what's going on down there. Climate change, you know, any emissions of these things and methane is especially important. It's, I believe it's, it's 100 times more potent than CO2 on a, on a 10-year time horizon, 100 times. And even on like a five-year time horizon, it's even more. So methane is extremely important to get a control on. So we need to really, and there's leaks throughout this whole system, from the production to the transmission, to the local distribution. So I think the leaks are much higher than anybody's predicting. I think it's, you know, probably around 10% of all gas produced is leaked. That's my guess. I'm not a scientist. I'm a blogger. But you know, this is, I can cite my sources to show you why I think that is. So, so because of this, because of climate change, because of methane leaks and contamination in Northeast Pennsylvania, water contamination and air pollution, all kinds of nasty side effects from fossil fuel infrastructure, we need to put the brakes on in a major way. Customers are encouraged to attend. There's going to be two public hearings. There's really going to be three. This one talks about one at the Borg Warner Room in the Tompkins County Library. And there's also, that's going to be Wednesday. And then another one on Thursday in Binghamton. And I'll give you the details in a little bit. Let me just continue on the reasons for the rate increase. Driving the increase in NISEG's electric rates is a robust vegetation management program being initiated by the utility. At the time of the rate increase filing, NISEG and Rochester Gas and Electric President Carl Taylor said, "The utility is making significant investments in its electricity delivery infrastructure and vegetation management to make the system far more reliable, particularly in violent storms." "We want to harden and to add resiliency to the system," Taylor said. "Our reason for, our largest region for outages in NISEG territory is vegetation and in storms even more so." Adding the amount of energy investment necessary in the NISEG franchise area is larger because of the age of the infrastructure. Increases in natural gas rates are largely the result of increased operational and management costs. So before we go into gas, I just want to say about this vegetation. So here's one thing that we need to be careful of. You know, these utility companies and pipeline companies, a lot of times they resort to chemical herbicides that they either bring in on, you know, they, you know, most of the time they spray it from the air, like from low-flying airplanes or helicopters. So, you know, that's something you want to comment on. If you don't want them spraying chemical poisons and defoliants, you know, from the air, tell NISEG that because that looks like it's, you know, the vast majority of this rate increase is going to be on the electric part. So that's one thing you might want to, to mention in your public comments. And if you don't make it to the two hearings, the one at the Borg Warner Room, Tompkins County Public Library in Ithaca, or the one at the Binghamton City Hall, you can still file a comment by mail or you can file a comment online. We're going to tell you all of those options coming soon. "If the rate increase is approved as submitted, the upward adjustment will produce $200 million of additional revenue for NISEG and Rochester Gas and Electric." This is a quote from the rate filing. "The company's filings also achieve the essential balance between the need for investment in electric and gas infrastructure with the important objective of maintaining customer rates that are affordable and among the lowest in New York." So that's industry talk. The last rate effect went into May 2016. So let's just run through this really quick. We've already missed the Rochester date. Keene Valley is going to be tomorrow, Wednesday, August 14th. That's at the Keene Valley Public Library. The end, there's going to be first a one-hour informational session and then the public hearing starts at 2:00. So the public, the informational session starts at 1:00 PM in Keene Valley, Keene Valley Public Library. And the public, the public hearing will start at 2:00 PM. And it's probably going to last a couple of hours, but always get there early so that you can make sure that you can, you can have your voice be heard. Wednesday, August 14th, that's also tomorrow. Tompkins County Public Library, Borg Warner Room. Maybe you can see this a little bit better. Green Street in Ithaca. The informational session is 1:00 PM. The public statement hearing is at 2:00 PM. And in Binghamton, Thursday, August 15th, that's the day after tomorrow, at the Bingham, Binghamton City Hall Council Chambers, informational session at 5:00 PM and the public statement hearing at 6:00 PM. And I'm going to try to get there. I don't know if I can get a ride, but I'm going to try to go to that and videotape it. Now, there are two rate cases involved, one for electric and one for gas. The electric case is for NISEG is, I'm just going to read the NISEG ones. You can, if you, if you're in Rochester, you can look this up. It's 19E 378 or 19E 0378 for the NISEG electric rate. That's the biggest jump. And 19G 0379 are the gas rates for NISEG. So while we're talking about this, so one of the things that NISEG wants to do, NISEG is taking this untested, very dangerous new equipment. These type four CNG, high-pressure bulk haul, carbon fiber composite, virtual pipeline tube trailers. I know it's a big thing to say, but they've got this brand-new way of supplying natural gas to communities. And that is tube trailers. Nobody's, I never heard this before. You've probably not heard of it either, unless you heard it from me. What the hell is a tube trailer? They call them virtual pipelines. I call them bomb trucks because they have extreme explosive potential. And don't listen to people. If you hear, you know, any kind of so-called academics that are saying that these trucks are safe or that they don't explode, don't listen to them because they're wrong. So I've got a couple of videos here. So go on YouTube and search for hashtag MV gas fires. That's one word, hashtag MV gas fires, hashtag MV gas fires update. And there's three videos in there and it talks all about this. One of the things that's impacting the, the gas rates is because there are moratoriums in, there's one NISEG moratorium. The other one is Con Edison in Westchester County. But there's a moratorium in Lansing for new gas hookups. And there's also some proposed, there's a proposal for Oneonta, New York, Atsigo County, which is the same thing. They want to, they have a proposal. I'm a little confused about whether it has to do with the redevelopment, this, this kind of, you know, development activity around the railroad yards or whether there is a need in Oneonta. I believe there is a need in Oneonta, the local, the NISEG local area that, including the SUNY campus there, that there are a few weeks a year when the pressure is, is low. So that creates a problem because they, if they lose pressure to customers, they can't maintain pressure to customers. It's a big cost to them. So they want to avoid that. So the two proposed are Oneonta and Lansing. There is an existing facility in Mechanicville, which is Saratoga County. And then there are at least two other locations that I know of. One is the city of Rye in New York, which is Westchester County. And the other is Glenwood Landing, which is on Long Island. So we have two proposals, one existing facility, and two other times that this has been done. So there's a total of five that I know of, of these, where they're taking these high-pressure type four CNG bulk haul, virtual pipeline tube trailers. That's what this thing is that you're looking at right here. Let's do, I got a point like that. That's what this thing is, this monstrosity. And they're, these are brand-new trailers. Nobody really knows about them because it's, it's a new innovation. They were issued a special permit, which is an exemption from obeying the law, from the hazmat laws. It's an exemption with special conditions in 2012. They, these trucks are, and really they weren't available in commercial production. And there wasn't any companies using these trailers until 2013. So really, maybe a little over five years, these things have been on the road. And we've only been seeing them around here in, in the Binghamton area, Broom County, where I'm from, since 2017, since early 2017. So two years, two years. This is a brand-new thing. I've been trying to raise the alarm about these trucks almost single-handedly for two years and had some help with, from Craig Stevens for a while. He was fantastic to work with. And also, you know, other people. There's lots of other people, like Vera Scroggins does a lot of work in this area. She really began this. I've been trying to do education about these vehicles. They're extremely dangerous and some of the applications, they're, they've got a brand-new application for these vehicles that it's never been done before. And there are unique risks in, when they have a situation like Oneonta or if they have a situation like Lansing, New York, Tompkins County, up by Ithaca, where the local distribution, the local distribution system, natural gas, going to people's homes and businesses, where in, in the times of peak demand, which is usually a couple of months or a few weeks in wintertime, depending on how you define peak demand, two weeks to two months, where the pressure is low, they bring in these tube trailers. They're extraordinarily high pressure. So the, the highest pressure in a pipeline generally, state-of-the-art steel pipeline, the brand-new ones they're putting in the ground now, are usually 1440, 1,440 PSI. I have seen a couple that I think were up to maybe 1460. I might've seen a 1480 mentioned once. Those are very rare. Usually it's 1440, 1,440 PSI. This, that's what the maximum for a state-of-the-art steel pipeline that's buried in the ground. These things, these things, these monstrosities. This thing here, there we go. This thing, this thing, it's a high-pressure bulk haul type four CNG virtual pipeline tube trailer. Can you say that? Say it with, with me, will you? High-pressure bulk haul type four CNG virtual pipeline tube trailer. It's a, they're taking these things, public utilities. Let me just show you this graphic really quick because this is, this shows you the, the two major, the two dominant manufacturers of these trucks, these trailers. I call them trucks, but really the truck is the whole, the combo, okay? It can refer to the whole combo. Really, we're talking about just the trailer, part of a semi-tractor trailer. We're talking about just the trailer, not the tractor, not the engine, not the power unit. So the two dominant manufacturers are Hexagon Lincoln and Quantum Fuel Systems. And the two primary companies that are basically, they're trucking and logistics companies, XNG and NG Advantage. So one of the things that they're doing is that they're working with natural gas local distribution systems to connect these virtual pipeline tube trailers, these brand-new things, only on the road since 2013 in North America, extremely high pressure. By the way, they say that they're 3,600 PSI, but I'm going to show you evidence later that these are really running closer to 4,500 PSI. Extraordinary. This is like, ah, let's just do the calc really quick, right? Let's do 1440 divided by 4,500. So it's really, let's do one over X. So three times, it's, it's more than, these trucks are running at more than three times the pressure of a state-of-the-art buried steel pipelines. And these things are driving at 70 miles an hour across our highways. They're traveling in rural residential neighborhoods, you know, rural and suburban and cities. These trucks are going to be more, more prevalent all over New York and less we work to try to stop them. They're really very explosive, very flammable. And it's stupid. It's methane. Methane is the stuff we really need to be addressing most. We don't need to be, you know, doing commercial, you know, commerce and trucking in methane. That's, no, that's wrong. That's bad. But even worse, even worse, friends, I haven't even told you. Watch these other videos that I've, that I've created. The playlist is pound sign, you know, hashtag MV gas fires update. Look for that on the Bill Houston Podcast channel on YouTube. And what I think you'll see is that, what you're going to see is that they are taking this, these high-pressure trailers. There is a unique risk involved in connecting these high-pressure tube trailers to natural gas local distribution systems. And that is, that, it's called the Jewell-Thompson Effect. And it has to do with the fact that when you discharge rapidly or if, if there's something goes wrong with your heater in your decompression skid, they normally heat the gas before they inject it into the natural gas local distribution system. If something goes wrong with the heater or if there's a rapid decompression event, like if, like if one of these tanks ruptures, this thing can produce cryogenic temperatures. This thing can produce temperatures, according to my estimations, and I've looked up the calculations, minus 170 degrees Fahrenheit, minus 170 degrees Fahrenheit to minus 260 degrees Fahrenheit. Which by the way, that is, if there's any methane geeks out there like me, you're going to know that minus 260 degrees is very special. Because that's the temperature by which natural gas turns into a liquid. So wait a minute, what? Let's summarize this, shall we? What, what are we talking about? That they're taking these trailers that are capable of cryogenic temperatures and they're connecting them up to natural gas local distribution systems in New York. This has never been done before. This has never been possible before. So there's a great potential risks if cryogenic temperature gas or LNG is injected into a natural gas distribution system. And it could cause a massive overpressurization event, like in my opinion, what we saw at Merrimack Valley. I'm sorry for that long detour. Let's go back to what we were reading about with the rate case that's coming up in Binghamton. Let's talk about some of the problems with, in some, you know, there's a letter to the editor we're going to read here by Robert Eklund. I think it's very good. Last year, the Atsigo County, so the commentary is, so here, I gotta just tell you this really quick. So one of the things that NISEG is going to be spending a lot of money on the natural gas side for is they want to expand this thing called the DeRouyter Pipeline. And it's going to go down through the Norwich area. And it's also going to go to Oneonta, all the way to Oneonta. And it's coming from the Dominion Pipeline in DeRouyter. That's why they call it the DeRouyter Pipeline. So this was part of, they call it the Dominion New Market Project. There's an existing medium-pressure NISEG distribution line that comes from DeRouyter through Norwich and going down into Oneonta. They want to expand that. Only they want to expand it in such a way that, did the math, did the area before, I think it's more than double. It more than doubles the, the cross-sectional area. So that more than doubles the amount of gas that's going to be available. And I think if you add in the old pipeline, they might keep the old pipeline in place. That means they're going to triple the capacity. So this thing is way, way. So this thing is way, way, way overbuilt. And the cost is going to be $49 million. And, but according to NISEG, the new scheme will cost at least $203 million. So the, the costs of this thing are jumping all over the place. I want to read you what Robert Eklund wrote in the Daily Star. "Last year, the Atsigo County Industrial Development Agency and Senator Jim Seward met behind closed doors with the president of NISEG. They cooked up plans for a new pipeline to be paid for by you, NISEG customers. Instead of replacing a 25-mile segment of 8-inch pipe from Norwich with a 10-inch line as previously planned, they want to lay 50 miles of 12-inch pipeline between DeRouyter and Oneonta. This back-room deal could triple the amount of fracked gas to Oneonta and quadruple the cost of supply replacing an old pipeline." Okay? This is part of what this rate increase is about. "The company's original proposal was priced at $49 million. According to NISEG, the new scheme will cost $203 million." That's four times. And put the bill, industry estimates put the bill at half a billion. Really? So could go up to $500 billion? Do we really want to be doing this? "We mustn't let," this is Bob Eklund, "we mustn't let New York in, we mustn't let the New York, in New York State Electric and Gas fool us. NISEG is a foreign-owned corporation, a subsidiary of Avangrid, with little concern for its customers, our region, or the planet. Fines levied against Avangrid for electric outages demonstrate the company's disregard for public welfare. Moreover, NISEG's current misguided push to expand fossil fuels instead of making electrical upgrades essential to support renewable energy and lower emissions runs counter to the state's climate goals recently codified into law." We're coming up into something really important here. "NISEG and the IDA claim that more gas will solve the 'interruptible' problem for customers such as SUNY Oneonta." Recall SUNY Oneonta, and I believe that refers to that, they pay lower rates because the supply is quote-unquote interruptible. Meaning, you know, a lot of times what happens when there's times of high demand, they'll call these interrupt, the utility will call the interruptible customer and say, you know, shed load, you know, you gotta get rid of some load, or basically turn off, turn your, your, your load off. "So NISEG and the IDA claim that more gas will solve the interruptible problem for customers such as SUNY Oneonta. But recall that SUNY Oneonta may burn oil, the equivalent of four days mid-winter during periods of peak gas demand. But instead of fairly compensating SUNY for the occasional inconvenience, the IDA, Industrial Development Agency, wants NISEG to charge the rest of us for an oversized pipeline likely to remain underutilized for decades. NISEG claims that expanding the DeRouyter Pipeline will allow the company to avoid running its Norwich compressor station. But the Norwich compressor station runs less than 1% of the time and costs only a few thousand dollars a year to operate. Finally, NISEG tells us that the DeRouyter, the existing line, is old and needs to be replaced. Yet, when asked, the company claims that there are no leaks. Even if its replacement is warranted, that just, that doesn't justify installing a new pipe that is twice as big and will cost millions of dollars more. So what's the real reason behind the oversized speculative, speculative project? It's simple. The Atsigo County IDA, Senator Seward, and NISEG are proposing, are promoting business-as-usual fossil fuel expansion." Okay? Business-as-usual fossil fuel expansion. Pretending that bigger pipelines don't carry more gas, NISEG disingenuously says that the Dominion Pipeline, which supplies the DeRouyter, is quote, "fully subscribed." By the way, the Daily Star is also fully subscribed. The Star sells the newspapers it prints. If the Star gets more customers, it will print more papers. I disagree with Bob Eklund here because pipelines do have a maximum capacity. So fully subscribed means that the pipeline might be at maximum capacity. "40,000 horsepower of new compression on the Dominion Pipeline means it will push a lot more gas. If NISEG wants more in the future, Dominion will provide it." That may or may not be true. We, we, I haven't seen the numbers on that. "Washington's mad rush to export gas to the world will also impact gas prices at home. When shipping liquefied natural gas to Europe becomes commonplace, our prices will double. When LNG is shipped regularly to Japan, our price will triple, unless Seward and the IDA are helping NISEG lay the groundwork to strangle rate payers and local businesses in the future. They must take a different approach as other utilities are doing. Some utilities realize they must decapitalize older pipelines, pulling dollars out of the ground instead of laying more pipe. Others are pursuing quote, 'non-pipe alternatives,' such as incentives for electric heat pumps to, in effort to cut gas consumption." I just want to point out that, that that is, this thing is a non-pipe alternative. So you have to be careful with that language. When you see non-pipe alternatives, that doesn't mean necessarily a good thing. Reducing consumption is a non-pipe alternative. That's great. That's something I support. You know, bringing in, you know, a different form of energy, like, you know, finding ways to getting people to heat with electricity instead of gas. That's, you know, energy efficiencies, that might be called, a non-pipe alternative. That's a good thing. But not all non-pipe alternatives are necessarily things you want. This is not something we want rolling through our communities. This is Bob Eklund in the Oneonta Daily Star. "Should energy policy affecting the future of our region, the climate, and the wallets and pocketbooks of NISEG customers be decided through back-room deals? Is that the best interest of rate payers and consistent with state law? No. The message behind the recently enacted climate legislation is clear. New York must use less fossil fuels tomorrow than today. We need to say no to NISEG's pipe dreams and plan for a sustainable future instead of taking directions from a politician and a rogue agency unable to move into the 21st century. Robert Eklund is a councilman in the town of New Lisbon." That's generally a very good letter. Okay. This is the Bill Houston Podcast. We are reviewing, and I'm telling you about this NISEG rate case that's coming up. It's active right now. NISEG is accepting comments right now. There are two different Public Service Commission dockets. One is for gas and one is for electric. And so they're proposing to raise the rates. So what we've already talked about on this stream, we've already talked about, you know, why NISEG is claiming they need to do these rate increases. We read from the President's Sun Bulletin. The two, let me just show you this right now, or I'll just read it to you. The two docket numbers are 19E. So this right here, just look up here, 19E 0378. That's the electric. 19G 0379. And all you have to do is go to the dps.ny.gov, New York State DPS, Department of Public Service. Go to their website and type "search." And then you just search for either 19E 0378 or the other one, 19G 0379. Search for either one of those there. Public hearings are coming up Wednesday and Thursday, tomorrow and Thursday. And we want to tell you about the hearings, your opportunity to make your voice be heard. If you can't make the public hearing, there's still ways you can submit comments electronically or by USPS snail mail. And now we're going to read some talking points coming from this other statement. This was published in The Banner, I'm not sure who wrote it. "And investment in gas infrastructure. Expanding gas infrastructure is both an environmentally and economically unsound investment and should be abandoned." Remember, the increased gas infrastructure is going to be this, this bomb-trucks terminal in Lansing, high-pressure bulk haul virtual pipeline tube trailers, you know? I call them bomb-trucks just for short, but you know, it's these things. There's a proposal on the table to bring these to Lansing and these to Oneonta. They're already going to Mechanicville, New York. They've been used in several other places in New York. They're very dangerous. There's very negative consequences, potential for great risk of fire and explosions, and also gas distribution system over-pressurization with these trucks. It's never been capable before. So, and then there's the DeRouyter Pipeline. Those are, that's really the big infrastructure. And this similar proposal for these high-pressure bulk haul Type IV CNG carbon fiber composite virtual pipeline tube trailers in Oneonta. They're going to be bringing these to Oneonta. You've, you've already probably seen them on the roads in Atsigo County, if you live in Atsigo County, because they go up 205. They took that route for about, you know, at least a year or longer. And then they quit for six months and they started going up Route 8 into Utica. Towards Utica, they would cut over and back to the other route. They're going to Herkimer County. So that's, these are the big infrastructure projects we know about. Is this DeRouyter Pipeline and then these two bomb-trucks proposals, one in Atsigo County and one in Tompkins County, Lansing. Okay, instead, let's go back and pick up where we left off. Instead, these are talking points. When you make your public comment to NISEG, or actually, you're making the public comment to the New York State Public Service Commission. And it's good to address your comments to the commission. That's the purpose of these public hearings. We're, we're trying to inform the commission and give them more information to help them better make a decision. If a lot of people show up for these, these public hearings, the better. And there's three coming up, Keene Valley, Ithaca, and Binghamton, the next two days. "So instead, let's subsidize beneficial electrification, which includes more funding for electric transit buses and school bus fleets, electric vehicle charging stations, and clean heating and cooling technologies such as heat pumps." I completely agree with that. "Improve the grid to support adequate charging stations for every bus depot that serves public transit or in the schools." If they want to charge us more, quote, "if they want to charge us more, they need to charge us more." Oh, it's kind of a joke. Okay, you get it, charging electric, okay. "Develop income-based programming and incentives for energy efficiency and heat pump technologies so that everyone in our community can afford these technologies and to meet the five..." Wow, the five, can that be right? Five Tera BTU? Wow! I've never heard Tera BTUs before. I've heard, let me look at this really quick. Okay, it's called "Natural Gas Units Conversion Table and Shocking Facts." Okay. So let's look at BTUs. Here is 1,000 BTUs. Here is 1 million BTUs. This is 1 million BTUs. And then this is 1 billion BTUs. So 1 billion would be a giga. And then Tera is trillion. So this is 1 trillion. I just have to convert this into units. So it's basically, okay, 1 BCF. That's still a lot of gas. So 1 BC, when they say that, let's go back to that. So then, when they say that we need to meet a 5 Tera BTU, units that I would be more familiar with would be a BCF. So that's 5 BCF. That is a lot of gas. Okay, 5 BCF. So let's continue on these talking points. "To help you inform your comments to NISEG about these rate increases, reduce the fixed charge for electricity service to $6 a month." Reduce the fixed charge, okay? Wow! "The fixed charges are regressive, meaning that poor and renters who use less electricity pay as much as the rich who use more." So this is, the fixed charge is inherently discriminatory against low-income and even middle-income people. "Unlike charges per kilowatt hour, fixed charges do nothing to incentivize energy conservation." So, and we should improve storm preparedness and the resiliency of our electric grid to reduce power outages." That's consistent with what NISEG says they want to do. I'm not sure what that comment, how that helps. "Make NISEG go green to earn green dollars. Shift to a performance-based incentive structure based on achieving affordable green energy goals to reform," it says, "RG&E's revenue model." I think that probably means RG&E and NISEG. I think it means both of those. And the point is that these plans that, I just wanted to emphasize this, but I wanted to find something that I could read to you that was official rather than me just blabbing at you and maybe getting the details wrong. Governor Cuomo signed into law this thing called the Climate and Community Protection Act. And it sets these energy goals. And I did touch, one of the things I did, I read to you, did touch on this, but I wanted to just emphasize it again, that any expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure, including methane pipelines of any kind or, or bomb-trucks, expanding this delivery infrastructure is really the wrong way to go according to New York law. Okay, friends, here are the three public hearings. Keene Valley Public Library, 1796 New York State Route 73, Keene Valley, New York, 12943. Wednesday, tomorrow, that's, this is tomorrow, Wednesday, August 14. The informational session is at 1:00 PM. The public statement hearing is going to be at 2:00 PM. Then we have the Tompkins County Public Library at the Borg Warner Room, 101 East Green Street, Ithaca, New York, 14850. That's also tomorrow, Wednesday, August 14. The informational session is at 1:00 PM and the public hearing is at 2:00 PM. And then lastly, we have Binghamton City Hall. And that's the Council Chambers, 38 Holly Street, Binghamton, New York, 13901. That's Thursday, that's the day after tomorrow, August 15, 2019. The informational session will be at 5:00 PM. That NISEG is going to be telling us about this rate case. And the public hearing will be at 6:00 PM. Okay? So that's the info, friends. We have a very, just in summary, we have, we got this very important NISEG rate case coming up. They only happen once every three years. NISEG is wanting to, they're proposing a rate increase for electric rates up to 24% and for gas rates, I think it was up to 4%. If you want to, to make a public comment, this is your opportunity. You've got three opportunities coming up, the three public hearings that I just told you about. If you want to file comments by mail, so here's how you do that. You deliver it, you email, or you address the envelope and direct the comments to the Honorable Kathleen H. Burgess, Secretary, Public Service Commission, 3 Empire State Plaza, Albany, New York, 12223. And you can, if you can, add the dash 1350 at the end. Once again, you can mail your comments to the Honorable Kathleen H. Burgess, Secretary, Public Service Commission, 3 Empire State Plaza, Albany, New York, 12223. You can, you can call the opinion line, 1-800-335-2120. That's 1-800-335-2120, 24 hours a day. Comments provided through this line are not transcribed, but a summary is provided to the ALJ and the commission for their consideration. Comments submitted by these alternative means are requested by August 26, August 26, 2019. Though comments will be accepted throughout these proceedings. Once again, the two, the docket numbers that you need to write, you know, you need to reference are 19E 0378, that's for electric, and also 19G 0379, that's for gas. And you can also email comments to secretary@dps.ny.gov. That's secretary.dps.ny.gov. Okay, so that's it. Public hearings coming up, important rate case. NISEG will very likely get approved for this rate increase unless the public really responds. Come out to the public. Come out to the public hearings and make your voice be heard. And I hope these, these comments have been helpful to you. If you, if you appreciate my work, friends, I really can use your donations. I cannot do this work without your help, without your support. So, donations are appreciated in any amount. I really have an extraordinary financial burden placed upon me. I really need to raise, I've raised a little bit. The budget that I needed to raise was about $3,500, and I've gotten maybe a couple of hundred dollars in so far. So I have a long way to go on the money that I need to raise in order to really continue, like, having food and shelter. That's where it comes down to, friends. So, let me see if I can point. So, there's, if you want to see what I've done with my life for the past 10 years, just Google Bill Houston's fracking resume, and, over here, fracking resume, just Google that, and you'll see a list. I have a lot of talents, and I really have devoted my life to the public service for the last 10 years. If you wanted to make a donation, there's links on the bottom of that page. And also, you can just go to, if you want to use PayPal, that's the fastest way for me to receive donations, and that's what I prefer, even though PayPal takes a small commission. Thank you so much, friends. I really appreciate you. I appreciate all of my donors and super donors, like, should I name? I need to have a scroll, I need to have the names handy. I just appreciate all of you that have donated to me. If you share my links, if you like this video and subscribe, all of that helps. If you have something nice to say about me, if you look at the work that I've done for the past 10 years, and if you appreciate any of that work, write me an email, and my contact info is there. You know, williamahouston@gmail.com. That's William A. H-U-S-T-O-N. It's not spelled like the city. H-U-S-T-O-N. William A. Houston@gmail.com. Send me a nice note. I can, I would really appreciate the boost right now, because I have a lot of threats to my well-being and my life right now. And I don't know how I'm going to survive and keep doing these shows. So, I need some big donations. Donations in any amount, I'm grateful for, but I'm really hoping that some NGO, some, you know, some nonprofit organization or foundation that has a budget can figure out a way how to help me out. Because I've got a lot of, a big burden on me right now. I'm happy to tell more about that, and I have some other videos that I just need to edit and get online where I can get into that more. That's it, friends. That's the NISEG Avangrid E-Birdola. There it is. Rate case coming up. So, make your voice heard. Let's not only keep the rates down and affordable for all people, and let's ask New York State, the Public Service Commission, to really regulate this for-profit foreign corporation. How did we, by the way, how did we ever turn over our critical energy infrastructure to a foreign corporation? Whose genius idea was that? I want to know when that happened, you know? That's, it's been probably for at least a decade. I don't know when it, when it happened exactly, or what governor allowed that to happen. But I think that's, this is a very bad idea. These public utilities should be state-owned, it should be publicly owned, and made not-for-profit. So, anyway, this is your chance to speak on the NISEG rate increase. You're talking to the New York State Public Service Commission. You can make a difference, friends. We made a difference with fracking. We've made a difference with a lot of these pipelines and infrastructure projects that we've got killed and canceled. So, okay, friends, that's it. I hope this is valuable to somebody. Thank you for tuning in, and we'll see you next time. Thanks a lot. Be sure to like and subscribe the Bill Houston Podcast. And that's it. Okay, over and out.